I'll call the school building committee meeting through roll call. There will be no agenda or adjustments from school committee.
I just want Mr. Chair, will we be, there'll be no budget transfers? Otherwise.
Yeah, Susan, it will be that. There are no budget transfers tonight. This meeting is being recorded because we have remote participation. All votes will be done by roll call. Also, there will be no agenda or adjustments for the school building committee. This meeting is being recorded. Because we have remote participation, all of our votes will also be roll called. Okay, public hearing on the fiscal year twenty six budget. Uh, I'd ask for motion to suspend the regular meeting, open the public hearing on the fiscal year twenty five budget, twenty six budget. And waive the rendering of public hearing notice. Motion? Second. Okay, Abington.
Yes.
Yes. Go has it? Yes. Annalove? Yes. Hanson? Yes. Moshfield?
Yes.
Noelwell? Yes. Rockland? Yes. Uh, Cituit? Yes. And Whitman?
Yes.
Okay, voters unanimous. Would anyone care to comment on the fiscal year twenty six budget proposal? I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing and return to the regular meeting agenda. Any discussion? Okay, so we got Abington?
Yes.
Go has it? Yes. Annalove? Yes. Hanson? Yes. Moshfield?
Yes.
Noelwell? Yes. Rockland? Yes. Cituit? Yes. Whitman?
Yes.
Okay. That vote was also unanimous. Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion to accept a donation of twenty twelve.
Oh, did I miss one? You missed the whole page. Sorry, Jack, on the back of the first page.
Did I get two pages? Oh, I got two pages stuck together. I'll pull the gentleman. Okay. Okay, we are now back to our regular meeting agenda. Public comment. Are there any comments tonight from the public? And next we'll hear from the student representatives. Benway, is she here?
Benway has not been this evening. She is fresh off of Pro Start, a successful event in at Gillette, so she'll be front on that next time.
Okay, she'll double up next month. Okay. Uh, administrative reports. I recognize Sandy for these reports.
Sure. I will begin with a couple of brief welcomes from new staff and then I'll pass it along to Director's Kirkland Instruction. I'm sorry to talk a little bit about the question. He was in ten times in terms of new staff. Um, we are excited to invite back to Sasha Tech alumni Steve Wallace and our electrical program. I had the pleasure of serving him as his teacher, uh, many moons ago where he was a polite, respectful, capable student. And he translated that into the classroom as a skilled electrician able to share history in um, a professional and caring way to our students. And he's settling right in with the students and is a respected member of the team already. So welcome Steve. And if you can move on to our final slide, which is with our new brand near to us, Katie Flutcher, a allied health instructor. She comes from industry as well. She has excellent experience as an RN and has worked closely as a support for RN candidates and student nurses uh, in their practical programs. And she is here with a part-time in two thousand twenty twenty five and will join us full-time in two thousand twenty six as a full-time allied health instructor. Uh, she too has settled right in, is headed right out to clinical with our students, building great rapport with our students. And the team of educators looks to be a strong one. So we're happy to have her as well. So uh, welcome to our newest staff member, our new faculty members as part of our education team. So thank you for that. We're going to turn over to Jones.
Hey folks, nice to see you. This one thing I've learned about NCAS presentations is to be brief. And I promise you, I'm going to be brief. Having said that, of course, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take those. Your. So having said that, the main reason I'm here to talk about is uh, the consequences. Question two, before I dig into that though, I of course would love to just do a very brief recap of success for our school uh, from NCAS twenty twenty four. Important highlights, we all performed the state in ELA math and physics. Uh, also important to keep in mind that we all performed twenty of the twenty eight other uh, regional vocational schools in ELA. And in math, we all performed twenty four of the twenty eight schools. So there's some really high achievement there um, for our students. Furthermore, our students demonstrated, most of the vast majority of our students demonstrated high growth or very high growth, those are the terms that DESI uses, which is fantastic. Also, to note, low-income and female students showed particular improvement. So these are just some big picture highlights, some great successes for our teachers and our students. Switching over to question two, I think the best way to phrase it is what has not changed. And some things to keep in mind with that are still, students do still need to take the NCAS. Right? That is still a requirement. So all of our students, all students, Massachusetts Public Schools will be taking NCAS. What also hasn't changed is that these test results are still used as a factor for the accountability of reports by the state. So they still do better in that regard. What has not changed is this uh, this little formula here as well. Students to earn a diploma need local graduation requirements and competency determination to get their diploma. So those are the two factors. That was what it was like before question two, that is what it is still like. Now, what hasn't changed finally is our local graduation. Thank you. It is our uh, our local graduation requirements have not changed. Right? What has changed however, is in fact how to earn a competency determination. This is what changed because of question two. What it used to be was um, simply earning that passing score on the high school NCAS test. That is no longer the case. Now, as a result of question two, to earn the competency determination, students have to successfully complete their ELA, math, and science coursework. Alright, so that's really the only change that's happened as a result of question two. Having said all of that, what really matters is what the impact is on our students. I'm just going to go through very briefly, brief overview for that. For the class of twenty twenty five, our seniors, they are all set. Alright, and that's an important thing in terms of the timing of this as well, right? All the seniors earned the competency determination because they all received a passing score on the NCAS test, pro retest. Our seniors this year are all set, no issues there. For our juniors, they are almost all set. Um, this, and this has to do with um, if they pass the NCAS, and this is the vast majority of our juniors, pass the NCAS are all set. As always, there are some exceptions. There are literally two exceptions. Um, and this has to do with, did they pass their retests in November? Did they not pass their retests? What were their scores? I won't get into that minutia here, other than to let you know our guidance department is familiar with who these students are. And of course, they're working to support the year and a half that they have left to make sure that they do what they need to do. Right? Uh, moving on to our sophomore class, they're all set for science. Uh, either they have passed their NCAS or they will pass their courses. So they have passed their courses. Um, ELA and math, that's going to be determined again by their coursework. Finally, for our freshman class and moving beyond, they're going to be all set. It's just a matter of them needing to pass their courses. Their ELA courses, math courses, science courses, things they would have to do to meet our local graduation requirements anyway. Alright, so again, big picture, everybody is all set. As always, we're on top of who might need some additional support and we're there to provide that. Uh, brief note, I do want to just shout out to uh, our staff members especially. Uh, we're in a very fortunate position relative to a lot of other schools and relative to a lot of our other vocational schools as well. Because our students have performed so well, not just in their coursework, but also on NCAS. So we're in a very fortunate position to be in right now. There are some schools that are doing a lot of scrambling, trying to figure out, do we need to do this, tracking down prior graduates who didn't pass any. There's a lot of stuff that a lot of folks, because of all the hard work of our staff, our students and our fans, we're in a really fortunate position uh, with these changes here. Uh, and again, those are links that are provided as part of your packet um, to give you some of the more in-depth details for the changes to the regulations. Uh, that FAQ that DESI released, but I also want to just notice that uh, as you can imagine, the other academic coordinators at vocational schools, we've been in touch a lot since November, just to really go over this here. So all of which to say, yes, there are some changes. We're okay. As always, we're going to take care of our kids and make sure that uh, the one or two that might need that extra attention will get that attention. Any questions?
Oh, that's great.
Very good.
Okay, moving on. Uh, next item is the approval of the minutes. I think the ten motion to approve the minutes from January twenty nine, twenty twenty five.
So move Whitman.
What's that? Second, Go has it? Okay, Abington.
Yes.
Go has it? Yes. Annalove? Yes. Hanson? Yes. Moshfield?
Yes.
Noelwell? Yes. Rockland? I've seen that it was not here. Uh, Cituit? Yes. And Whitman?
Yes.
Yes. So we have eight yes and one absten- extension. As I properly. Okay, reports. Prejudice report, Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Kevin. Uh, when you, your practice tonight, you have a prejudice report. On the cover, we have you know, a group of culinary students um, that went to Gillette Stadium this week um, for some competition and some pictures of the welding, the metal fat welding that again, getting, getting dirty about the spots and the weldings and so folks suck. Um, remember like, a lot, most of these pictures I use, they, they come off the Facebook page. Um, so the staff is like doing a great job for social media, updating um, all that happens in the school and the town, the school Facebook page. So um, second page is our cash balances and so forth. Um, right now, we have a four point five million dollars in the bank. Um, which is great. Um, next page, revenue. Again, a slow month of revenue only because we, we don't bill anybody and we, we go out of member towns on, on February first. And those grids just went out. Uh, we didn't see three fifty, three hundred and two thousand from Annalove. Uh, they were a little late getting their payments, but they have been restructuring at the town hall. Um, so we were, we knew that it was happening. And actually, Annalove already, we built on February first, Annalove already paid the third assessment. So we, that one came in yesterday. So they're, they're all caught up in the good breaks. And we've got our four hundred and eighty thousand dollars in chapter seventy eight, for a total of eight hundred and forty thousand dollars for the month. The expenditures, um, again, typical month, seven hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars in payroll. Um, that comes through the budget. Um, overall, one point one million dollars. Um, again, health insurance, payroll, parent taxes, uh, the line and share. And again, um, yeah, Janine and Pam is doing a great job um, with payroll processing and, and Pam's keeping, this is the time of year when there tends to be some um, some overspending on some of the budget line items that she has to double check with Tom regarding approvals, because if someone, if someone has a line item on their budget and they want to overspend that line item, they need permission to do that. So she's um, she's the watchdog in the office to make sure that no one overspends your budget unless um, they have like a prior pool for that. Either Tom or, or Keith or Sandy on some of those items. So um, and that's it. So again, just plugging on, everything's going well financially. So.
Okay. Uh, this is a motion to approve the prejudice ruling. Abington?
Yes.
Go has it?
Yes.
Annalove?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Moshfield?
Yes.
Noelwell?
Yes.
Rockland?
Yes.
The truth? Yes. Whitman?
Yes.
That vote is unanimous. Other updates? Anything?
Nothing.
I'll go and just go check. Any updates, Jim?
Well, thank you.
You're all set. Okay, now we'll turn it over to the superintendent director.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very briefly tonight, uh, I mentioned that at our last meeting that I would just put back on the agenda, the regional agreement amendment update. Uh, and naturally to just provide you with a clean copy of the agreement. Uh, that's in, that's in your packets. We're just uh, we have the Department of Education's approval. It is in effect. And we are now just, we will now ask our town clerks to run online docu-sign process, which is what they did a year ago uh, when we amended the agreement. Um, so we'll have them sign it and then we'll update the agreement that we put online, but that, that agreement is in effect. I'd also like to mention briefly that as our budget process moves forward, um, Jack and I were at Cituit Select Board last night and will be at Cituit Advisory on Zoom tomorrow night. And uh, I have meetings uh, in Abington uh, at about seven thirty tonight. And then also in Whitman, Hanson, and Rockland this month. And we're scheduled, Dustin and I are scheduled in Norwell on March sixth. So essentially between now and uh, the town meeting window, we'll, we'll pay a visit to our towns. Uh, give them an update on the fiscal twenty six budget, look at how the assessments are impacting their towns and um, and perhaps talk a little bit about the uh, the building project and next steps and next steps with that. So uh, more to be said on that at, at our next meeting. Also, I'll mention briefly that later this month, if you see, you, you may see some uh, media attention as I'm told that the Board of Education is going to be putting out draft regulations on changes to vocational admissions regulations. I'll put that on our March agenda so I can give you an update. We are, I'm not aware of the actual language, but it's certainly of something of interest to our community and, and I'll bring that to you next month. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to continue with old business events. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Under old business, uh, I would ask for your approval for the uh, twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar, which was given in draft form at our last meeting.
That for a motion for a school calendar? Motion? We have a second?
Second, Whitman.
Okay, Abington?
Yes.
Go has it?
Yes.
Annalove?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Moshfield?
Yes.
Noelwell? Yes. Rockland? Yes. Cituit? Yes. Whitman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, that passes unanimously. Uh, new business.
You want to take that right? Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so the next item under new business is the FY twenty-six budget certification. Uh, this is a typical process for our committee at this time of year as we certify budgets. We're, we're obligated to certify a budget number uh, no less than forty-five days before our earliest town meeting. And that is part of the factor of, of meeting at this time in the month, our first, uh, our first town meeting is April seventh. So the proposed budget that I, that I talked about at our last meeting uh, is sixteen million nine hundred forty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars. By certifying the budget, the committee sets a ceiling. The budget process always moves forward and it does not come to completion until we've secured at least six out of nine towns at spring annual town meetings. But by certifying the budget, there, there would be no further amendments or changes that would somehow raise it. That's very important. Because when Jim puts, when he crunches the numbers based on the governor's budget, we are already giving assessment numbers to our towns. The town financial teams are already baking it into their budget. That's what we're talking about at FinCon meeting. So this is, actually, this is an annual vote where we, where we go through this process. So uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. That's what I would ask of this next item.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll entertain a motion, Dan from Whitman.
We have a second?
Second, Annalove.
And Mr. Chair, just for the record, sixteen million nine hundred forty-four thousand, six hundred forty-nine. Is that all right, Dan? I just stated the. Thank you.
Yeah, it's not going in your wallet though. If only.
I have no complaints.
Abington?
Yes.
Go has it?
Yes.
Annalove?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Moshfield?
Yes.
Noelwell?
Yes.
Rockland?
Yes.
Cituit? Yes. Whitman?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is project funding agreement. I entertain a motion to approve votes as presented to the meeting and direct the secretary to incorporate the text of the votes in the minutes of the meeting. The vote language addresses the execution of project funding agreement with MSBA for the new high school project. Uh, authorization, a signature for project funding agreement and related matters, and establishing post-insurance tax compliance and continued disclosure practices relating to the issuance of notes and bonds of the, of the district. Do we have a motion?
Motion here. Moshfield, second.
Joe, Sir Moshfield, okay. Any discretion?
Mr. Chair, if I may, just for the record, to say that our, our district's bond council prepared the document that committee members have and also suggested a more concise summary, because this is, it's rather lengthy. It is a, it's an important procedural next step as we begin the next phase of this building project. Thank you. Okay.
Anyone else?
Excuse me.
Okay, Abington?
Yes.
Go has it?
Yes.
Annalove?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Moshfield?
Yes.
Noelwell?
Yes.
Rockland?
Yes.
Cituit? Yes. Whitman?
Yes.
Okay, that also passes unanimously. Uh, donations. I'd ask for a motion to accept a donation of the twenty-twelve Chevy Silverado twenty-five hundred and a two thousand thirteen GMC Sierra fifteen hundred from Mass Bay Community College to our automotive department. So. Second? We have a second?
Second, Whitman, second.
Okay, Abington?
Yes.
Go has it?
Yes.
Annalove?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Moshfield?
Yes.
Noelwell?
Yes.
Rockland?
Yes.
Cituit? Yes. Whitman?
Yes.
That vote was unanimous as well. Are there any requests for action? Seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the school committee meeting. Dan?
Uh, with all due respect, motion?
Second?
Abington?
Abington? Abington?
Yes.
Go has it?
Yes.
Annalove?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Moshfield?
Yes.
Noelwell?
Yes.
Rockland?
Yes.
Cituit?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
That also was unanimous. Okay, now I'll turn it over to the building committee.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate that. Uh, public comment for the building committee. Are there any comments tonight from the public for the school building committee? Saying none? We'll get right into it. I'll entertain a motion for approve the minutes of the December eighteenth, twenty twenty-four school building committee meeting.
The move.
Cituit? Second?
Go has it?
Go has it? Any discretion on that?
No.
I'll take a roll call vote. Bob Haywood? Yes. Tom Hinky?
Yes.
Sandy Baldwin?
Yes.
George Cooney?
Yes.
Jim Goffman?
Yes.
Bob Mahoney?
Yes.
Jack Manning?
Yes.
Bob Mellow?
None.
None on? Joe Zandvalo?
Yes.
Tom Petrosali?
Yes.
Dustin Riden?
Yes.
Dan Salwucci?
Yes.
Keith Nardos? And Frank Lola?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries. Uh, I'll recognize Kevin Sullivan for your report.
Thank you.
There you are. Thank you. All right. Good to see you all. I just wanted to talk through a couple of items. Uh, it's, I think it's been several months before uh, Left Field and the rest of the party team came up and planned a group. Uh, as you're all aware, we had a successful unanimous district-wide vote on January twenty-fifth and uh, and now the real work starts. And so here we are. Uh, the first order of business in order to, to proceed and to put all of us back to work uh, is to review and approve our contract amendments. Our previous contracts and amendments took us through the feasibility study and some design phase of the MSBA. Uh, that was completed, it submitted to the MSBA in August and then approved by the MSBA in October. And now that we have a successful district-wide vote and are working towards executing a project planning agreement, uh, we are looking to execute the contract amendments to move into the next phase, which is design development. So uh, I did email over the contracts, some backup documents, and I'm going to go through them one by one and hopefully I can my eyes don't fail me. I'm going to have to stand a little closer if that's all right. And I'm going to talk, talk through this. So again, the next phase of, of the process is the design development phase. Thank you, Chris Hall. No, I think it's. Let me know when you're good. And so I'm just going to summarize this, this next contract amendment for Left Field, DRA, and Suffolk. It, Left Field and DRA takes us through the entirety of the project. It takes us through design development, construction documents, going out to bid, construction, and then close out. Uh, so I'm just going to highlight the, the fees associated with each, each of those phases. I'll start with Left Field. Uh, the design development uh, phase fee is four hundred and six thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars. For construction documents, six hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. For bidding, it's two hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And for construction, it's five million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars. And for closeout, uh, commissioning and completion, it's four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. We bring our contract total up to seven million, seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and three dollars. I'm happy to answer any questions on Left Field's amendment.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, uh, Kevin, these amendment figures for Left Field and what you'll eventually present on DRA and Suffolk were numbers that were already part of documentation that we had submitted to MSBA?
Yes, that's correct. I should have mentioned that. So when we submitted a standard design package to the MSBA in August, uh, one of the things we had to do was we had to bring it to this group. And the biggest part of that was the budget. It's a Form thirty-eleven, if you remember, I spent a lot of time dissecting it and explaining it. The figures in all of our amendments were exactly as they were in that budget that was presented to you all in August and that submitted to the MSBA.
And these amendments didn't have immediate relevance because we needed to secure district approval. We had to secure the approval of the voters.
Correct.
And now that we have, this is the next step.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair?
And just to follow with Tom, all these numbers are, are already embedded in the, the major contract costs of two seventy, two hundred and seventy-four.
That's, that's correct.
And they've changed anything?
There's been no changes at all. DRA or second.
Okay.
He asked my question. It's just funny, the price wasn't going. The price, the price has not come out on any of these.
Um, anyone else have anything?
Okay, I'll move on to the DRA.
Yes.
Great. Okay, so the next contract amendment for DRA again takes them, your design development, CDs, bidding, construction, and closeout. The design development phase fee for DRA is five million, fifty thousand dollars. For construction documents, it's eight million, six hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. For bidding, it's one million, ten thousand dollars. For construction, it's four million, seven hundred and ninety thousand. For closeout, commissioning and completion, and two hundred and fifty thousand, other reimbursable services, which uh, if you have questions, Kyle can answer, uh, is five hundred and fifty thousand for a total of twenty-one million, four hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. And, and again, these match the budget that was submitted and, and reviewed by this group and submitted to the MSBA.
Reunversable, what is that?
Probably, see what that one?
Sure. Well, um, there, there are certain services um, that are provided through us, generally by consultants like traffic. Um, uh, if additional surveys needed, if uh, additional geotechnical services are needed, uh, additional investigation that has, hazard imperials and consults. I think those are the, the four major categories. Those are the scopes of work that um, one, it's, it's part of the MSBA standard contract to say that generally those services I handle that That um, one, it's it's part of the MSBA standard contract to say that generally those services I handle as a reimbursable. But two, it's because they generally are scopes that are somewhat variable and and. Uh hard to estimate in advance, so that why they're gonna.
So that will get you proposal in advance and approvals before proceeding of those services.
So that's an estimated value of that. Yeah, that's sort of an upset budget for uh that entire category.
If you, just for context, I must skip ahead a little bit, just to kind of. So, there was a similar type of um. Part of the budget during feasibility study schematic design where we, you know, there were other some consultants required by you. We had a category of of other environmental insight, and it was, I'd now say, not to exceed, but we allocated a certain amount of money. Not knowing exactly how much would be needed, I would say, and I'll I'll summarize this again, but we estimated. You know, five hundred thousand dollars of which most we did, most of that we didn't spend, so is it fair to say that? If you if those costs aren't needed, you're not gonna be submitting those.
Right, and those are, you know, as needed, uh in advance, you get the whole system.
I think it's pretty standard, you know, on what we see on on these projects.
Okay, can you have a question on that?
Uh just, how do you run into uh in costing during construction extras? When you determine those extras, there's no extras unless anything you need to cover in actual place?
Um, if there are changes in scope from from the design team, you mean, Bob?
Yeah, yeah.
If there are changes in scope, um that are um sort of authorized by you all as the as the district. To say, well, we'd like to build, we'd like to put Tom's office in the building and make it bigger, or we we'd like to do something different than what was in the schematic design scope. Then we would, again, generally do that on a proposal basis, you know, get a proposal to you in advance to say. You know, that scope, that's beyond what we anticipated, and we'd ask for your approval before proceeding. If there are things that, um during the course of producing the construction documents. Um Suffolk has a question about, you know, what should this dimension be, and we have to produce a sketch, that's not additional service, that's clarity.
That's my question.
Or they have, probably we leave something out, you know, something's missing, we have to add it, that's part of this, no, no additional charge for those.
So that's, that was my point, yeah, too, that they had questions or something happens in the field, they did changes of that, would that be considered as an extra or not, that's all.
And I think one of the benefits, going to construction manager risk is, you know, we have time to work together. Uh to make sure Suffolk understands everything that's in their drawing, or if it's only the subject.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else?
All right, I'll move on to the last one. So this is actually the the first contract amendment for Suffolk, uh there'll be at least one more, and um. This includes schematic design services, which, you know, they already performed during uh leading up to the vote. And the next phase is pre-construction services, so this does not take them through the private. That will, you know, that will happen when we go out to bid and determine, you know, what the actual costs are. Uh the amount for pre-construction services for Suffolk is two hundred sixty-eight thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars. In addition to the original fifty thousand dollars, which shows three hundred eighteen thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars. Again, this matches what we had anticipated and put on the budget that went to MSBA.
Mister Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry. So, Kevin, so amendment, the amendment to you and Kyle.
Yeah.
Those amendments supposed to be for the life of the project?
Yes, those will take us both through.
Right, and this is gonna take them two weeks.
No, this is gonna take. This is take them through most of the design. Yeah.
Pre-construction.
Okay. Good question.
All right, anything else? Nope. I think we're good.
Okay.
Do we wanna uh vote on the amendments?
Mister Chair, I'll make a motion that that we approve the amended contracts for Left Field, DRA and Suffolk as presented.
Second.
Second by Rockland. Any discussion on the motion? We accept those? I'll take a roll call vote, Bob Heywood, yes? Tom Hickey?
Yes.
Sandy Baldwin?
Yes.
George Cooney?
Yes.
Jim Coughlin?
Yes.
Bob Mahoney?
Yes.
Jack Manning?
Yes.
Bob, look, Bob's not here. Joe Zandalow?
Yes.
Tom Petroselli?
Yes.
Dustin Riden?
Yes.
Dan Salwucci?
Yes.
And Frank Mola?
Yes.
Both, motion carries. I'll take that there.
Okay, so I'm gonna touch on a, going backwards, this is the feasibility study schematic design budget that uh is for two million dollars. And um we're currently going through the process of reconciling that to make sure we eventually get that all of the costs into MSBA and then. And and to make sure you're all re-invested full. Uh one of the things we have been updating you on was, you know, there was two million dollars in this, I think for the past several months, we've been saying, we're not gonna spend it all. And we're not. So, at at one point, we thought, um there was, we have contracts executed of, you know, a little over. One point six million dollars was what left us about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars of remaining funds. We had anticipated, again, kind of back to one of your initial questions, you know, if there's an additional traffic study or additional hazmat. You know, we 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 thought there may be an additional hundred thousand dollars worth of um, you know, services, and and again, that was within the the two million dollars. Um we are working to double check that, uh those are all covered, but I expect. At least three hundred of that three hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars uh to be returned to the district and hopefully go towards the project, so. Uh I'd say it's a success that that we came in under budget for this amount.
Right.
Good.
Yeah, continue continue that theme throughout. Uh again, we just uh touched on some next steps, Tom had mentioned executing the project funding agreement, that's the vehicle. That that allows you to get stock getting paid, and it formalizes your product with the MSBA, so it's a very, very, very big mi- milestone. And it sounds like that's happening right now.
Yeah, uh Mister Chair, yeah, so that vote that the school committee took a little earlier, the lengthy, the motion that Jack summarized. That includes the authorization for me to be able to sign it and move that forward, we have to provide that to MSBA. We have to provide that to bond council so that they can also do what they need to do, um so yeah, a very important document.
Yeah, and one of the reasons that's it's important is, right now, you only have a feasibility study agreement with the MSBA, which means they've only agreed to reimburse you. Your portion of eligible costs for the two million dollars we just reviewed. This project funding agreement will allow you to submit, um that, you know, as as you all start receiving bigger bills from Left Field and DRA and Suffolk. You're gonna be, you're gonna have to pay them, but you'll be able to submit it to MSBA, and given the size of them, it's very important exercise just for cash flow purposes and borrowing. So, again, it's a very good milestone in the MSBA's process. Uh we we just reviewed and we've approved the contracts, and I'm gonna touch on. Uh probably what everyone's interested in, all right, what happens next, so, we are moving into design development, um. The the design phase takes longer than most, you know, folks would expect, it's a it's a big project. Um, you know, we're gonna, we expect to be in design development for the next four or five months. Uh and we expect to be working through construction, so if design development takes us through June or uh maybe even the end of June. Um we would start the construction documents phase in in June or July, and that would take us, you know, another seven or eight months. We're still kind of, we're working on that together because um we're we're trying to determine if early site, early bid packages are are the best route. We're really trying to get creative and make sure that if there's any opportunity to uh to take advantage of um, you know, to take advantage of the market. Or the schedule, we we wanna do that as a team, and I think, you know, we're meeting on a weekly basis, and we won't make any decisions before we present them to you. Um but again, big picture, we're gonna be designing this thing for the next nine to twelve months, uh if not longer, probably a little longer. And then going out to bid for um, you know, the trade contractors, and 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 goal is to start. The major construction, you know, in the summer of twenty twenty-six, that doesn't mean there aren't opportunities to start earlier. Like everyone's keenly aware of what's happening with tariffs in the market, and you know, we're all kind of looking at, looking at that on a daily basis. Trying to understand, what does it mean, what does it mean for this project, you know, will there be opportunities, or or will it benefit us to? Uh to buy materials earlier, or shift things around, those are things we're gonna be working on together, and again, we'll we'll bring those to you all before we make any decisions, but. Uh hopefully you can appreciate the the fluidity here, um knowing that there is some, right now, there is some uncertainty in the market, and we wanna do everything we can to make sure, you know, um. That we get ahead of it, so, design for the next, you know. Again, twelve or fifteen months, start, you know, go to bid in the late spring, early summer of uh of twenty twenty-six, start construction. The major construction of the building, um in in the summer of twenty-six, and then, you know, the goal is to have. Construction done by uh late summer or summer of twenty twenty-eight, and and get the students in there, and it's, there's obviously a number of other things that happen after the the school's. Been completed, there's gonna be some additional site work, you know, we'll be working through punchless commissioning and and some other. Some other items that are, you know, part of sometimes a lengthy MSBA closeout process, so, this is at ten thousand feet, this is gonna be refined and updated. Uh as we all work together over the next couple of months.
Mister Chair, if I if I can, Kevin, during the design development phase, what are some of the things that a school building committee would? Have, other than, you know, if we're gonna vote minutes, we're gonna vote invoices, and, but what are some of the, what are some of the things that the committee as a whole might need to? Make a decision on, or choose A over B, or uh or is it, is it more about the professionals are doing their work, you're gonna walk us through deeper design? Uh drawings and such, or is that?
That's a great question, so the MSBA requires a a D V sixty and ninety percent, so we'll work together, or Kyle and his team will continue to advance the drawings. We'll be providing you with updates, we, you know, we're we're gonna have to submit an updated design development sixty percent package to the MSBA. It's not much different than the the robust schematic design package that we put together, which has a cost as the mid, updated schedule, a number of other approvals. We'll be asking for you all those, that will be submitted to the MSBA, and as part of the process, I could imagine, there'll be a budget update that we give, so. Carly wanna answer that?
Yeah, I could elaborate a little bit, the the word design might be a little misleading in the design development phase, we're not. You know, we're gonna relook at the the layout of the building, and I can move the gym from one end of the building to the other, or. And and we're gonna add, you know, specificity to the to the drawings, so that. Our estimators and and Suffolk's estimators can can do a better job and more precise job. Of cost estimating the the project at at the end of this phase in in May or June. Uh and then again, at at sixty percent of CDs and ninety percent of CDs, so there's three more cost estimates coming from two of us. Um to check and keep a handle on cost, but the things that we'll be bringing back to you are sort of um. Those uh recommendations of of um finer detail, material choices. Uh eventually we'll get into colors and and uh those sorts of uh uh levels of of uh information. We'll share with you, kind of by systems is the best way to think about it, we'll we'll look at the exterior of the building and the materials and layout of that. We'll look at the interior of the building, the spatial layout and material, we'll look at the mechanical systems, electrical systems again. And uh again, with uh another layer of of information to what we already have in the schematic design set. We'll look at the site planning, um layouts again, for details and and dimensions and things like that. So our plan is, in in terms of, as as Kevin mentioned, we're meeting weekly as a team, and we're meeting bi-weekly with. A so-called working group of Tom and whoever's needed, depending on the agenda item, uh for every two weeks. And then we would anticipate meeting with you all as a building committee on a monthly basis, and there may be. One or two more additional meetings needed at those key milestone dates, so that when we have to make the design development submission. You know, we get your approval after the cost estimates are are in and so forth. So, uh basically, um uh your pace is is similar to what you've been used to, I think, up to now, meeting monthly. And we'll bring you those decisions that need to be voted on. Most of the times, they're recommendations, ob- obviously that that we and all our consultants have made and and worked out in advance with the working group, and. Um there'll be a few times when there might be, um you know, literally some A or B, A cost this and B cost this. And here's the pros and cons of these two choices, and and if the working group doesn't have a recommendation itself, we might present it to you, but. Generally, there's one preferable option for these things that we look for your blessing on.
Okay, just just to add a little context, the the only, or the biggest difference between where we're going and where you've been in terms of the MSBA's process is. You've had to go through several levels of MSBA board approval. You don't have to do that anymore, and that's a, that's a big deal, because it allows us to.
They they do review our submissions at the end of the design development, give us comments back, and we respond to the comments, but it's not the board level, it's staff level review.
Yeah, sometimes those board approvals will will come with like a month or two of waiting, and we have to submit to them, and then just kind of wait for, you know. Uh yes, MSBA, they'll be doing their review, but we get to keep moving, and he's, I think, a very good thing.
And no more water change.
No more.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Oh, we got a couple.
Yeah, um, what, from what you discussed, what do you see as an opportunity for the students to become involved in? You know, cost estimating and picking materials and, you know, where do you think a student in any one of the doctrines of the code? Um.
Yeah, we we'd love to have a a whole separate offline discussion about involving students, because it can be. In in a number of ways, involved in the actual process, seeing our team, there are people interested in, you know, drafting and and.
Right.
I have to put documents together and engineering and uh design heating systems and electrical systems.
Absolutely.
So, we we'd love to work out something with the staff and admin to come into a class, or or wherever, and share that sort of thing. But then also the involvement of the students in the actual construction process, that. We we'd like to think about parts of this work that we can actually lean out of Suffolk's contract, to have the school actually build. Cool. On their own after the fact, not simultaneously, we have to sort of keep that separate.
Yeah.
Uh but after they're complete, um you know, things like a concession stand or press box or dugouts. Uh or some millwork or cabinetry for inside the school, things like that, so. We we'll be working with the administration that that involves students in a number of ways.
And the benefit of Suffolk, you you all hold your diamond right now, so you're probably learning good opportunities, which ones work, which ones work better, maybe getting some new ideas that's. You know, we can incorporate it to this project.
One other one I had, which, I imagine this size of this building, um is going to use. Perhaps more water, more electricity, more gas, um and if you are familiar with dealing with the public utility. To upgrade your service at your house, um. Any guesses on how much electricity more would be required for this new project?
We will be, um, we have preliminary numbers in that regard, George, but we're gonna get more specific um. Uh energy calculations by our team, we have, not only our mechanical electrical engineers, but also we have a sustainability specialist who will do. Sort of an energy model of the building and kind of like run it through the bases for a whole year, at different, you know, times of year, different. Whether the, you know, to calculate that, but we will be using less gas, because the building is gonna be. For the most part, the the only gas really is is minor amount to like the HVAC shop, so they can train on. On gas boilers at culinary shop perhaps, so they can still use gas for cooking if they want. But there's um a big portion, a big incentive to be all.
Right.
Um and we already have checked with the utility companies in terms of the basic capacities, so we can get enough electricity to the site and enough water, yeah.
Thank you.
Kevin, very late week, I like to estimate of being in the construction field, I mean, you always wanted to delay. Which, which one is, so like, if we, is there availability to start sooner than the plan? With these things in case of delay, that we don't want into.
Yeah, so, yeah, again, I think in our weekly.
I mean, we are always looking to start, really, if we if we have enough of duty, we talked about making the access room prior to the, you know, school being finished. Uh obviously, we have to look at your sports, your teams and what your schedules are, and work around that.
Yeah.
But any opportunity we have to have early these packages, to ensure that we get them in time when we need.
I mean, I think as we meet, as we meet on a weekly basis, we're gonna have those conversations, because, you know, we may see delays on materials over the next couple of months, and we're gonna make some. Decisions to make sure that if you have to buy something early, or if we have to shift the schedule, we're gonna.
That that's one of the advantages of the construction manager risk delivery process, as opposed to a lump sum bid with the general contractors. Being able to have early site packages, being able to have their input. Being able to have early site packages, being able to have their input, what you just approved in terms of pre-construction services to help us make choices, help you make decisions on systems or materials or long lead.
That's the thing, it's scary with materials and what's going on and.
Yeah.
No, if you get locked into those now, you have to the amounts that we're gonna need, you know? It could be a price increase. Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna try. I mean, I have a number of projects over the past couple of years when the switch gears and transponders had the most unbelievable lead times, you know, on a C M R S project, you're able, able to go up and get them ahead of time. And if it was a standard design bid build, you can hear, you know, the lot of those buildings didn't open up on time.
You did that a dime.
Is there anything that we could do to help get things started soon?
Well, I think approving the contracts tonight was.
Mr. Chair, I'll add, locally, we're making contingency plans for alternate athletic sites for the spring twenty-six season as well as finding an old email from the South Shore Music Circus about possibly a class of twenty-six graduation. If in fact, it was in the best interest of the district with a package to set up the site or do something prior to summer twenty-twenty-six. So certainly weighing those options early and seeing where there's a potential, you know, it's an opportunity cost. What are we giving up, what are we gaining?
Because now I get the questions like, oh, now you did this, now you get that, you got your vote, now when are you gonna start?
Yeah. When you dig in the hole.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I encourage you, keep, you know, if you have ideas or you hear things, share, you know, call me, share them because, you know, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna kind of consider everything.
So I have, I have a question. First of all, Kevin, no one's happy that we will not have another election, by the way. But that being said, and this may be for you, Tom. So we get to the next phase here and of course, everything's approved, but now you have to go back to the towns to get the money, right? So, you know, obviously, it looks like debt exclusion. Is it this year, is it next year? When does, when does that start getting put in play?
Sure, Joe, yes. So at this point, with the, with the successful election district wide, it's now the towns' individual decision. And so my messaging to our towns is, we're here to provide information. That's what Jack and I literally did last night in Situate. Gave them an aggregate sense of if we borrowed the money in the way that we were saying, this is what it would, this is what it would cost. So a debt exclusion is a town decision. And last night, Situate Select Board voted to put on their spring local election ballot a question of the debt exclusion. Debt exclusions by definition do not include a specific dollar amount. So for folks that remember like, hey, aren't we doing debt share on this four-year rolling average? How are you supposed to nail that jello to the wall? Like, because people thought that maybe you had to put a specific dollar amount, like one point two bajillion. And if it's, if it's not that, there's a problem. So what I would expect would happen is that most, if not all of our communities, if not this spring, then next spring, would take a, would, would put that matter in front of their communities. It's a select board decision. It does not require a town meeting vote prior to that. So every town, again, this is where we respectfully stay in our lane, where there is a resource. So we, as the district, don't call any of those elections. So it's ultimately looking at the cost impact. What can our towns fit under the levy limit? And my general sense, Joe, is that the, our fiscal twenty-six budget proposal is that we will cover fiscal twenty-six interest from our stabilization fund. And then, but as Jim puts the assessment numbers together, every year, we're gonna carry a debt service line and we're forecasting for our towns. I think most towns are looking at these numbers saying, fiscal twenty-six, you're covering that? Great. Fiscal twenty-seven, it's a little bit more, okay, we could probably cover it. But by fiscal twenty-eight, I don't think that there's capacity. But I also think that towns need the time to educate their voters, help them make a decision and explain that the project has been obligated. And so if a debt exclusion is not successful, it is ultimately still the responsibility of the municipality. And, and it's, I think it's highly unlikely that some of these very, very big numbers could be fit under anyone's prop two and a half levy limit. So that's a long answer, Joe, but that is exactly what towns are talking about now. So some of our communities, we may see a local select board decision to do that. And, and again, that's entirely the town's power and decision to do that.
Great, thanks, Tom.
Sure thing.
So the question is probably more for Tom and Jim. So on the proposal, on a lot of the proposals that we saw, it was all the municipalities. We saw the two different lines. We saw equal principal or equal debt. Or if I'm getting that wrong, I apologize. So when would we as a committee or a board be making a decision on how we were gonna be paying that debt going forward?
Unibank Financial Advisors tell Jim and I it would be just prior, so I'm saying twenty-twenty-eight. It's not a, we, the messaging is we'll, we would look at the market. But what I have said to all of our communities when presenting and is essentially we would go and seek the counsel of our respective town financial teams. What's your situation? What's the story? A more aggressive assessment model means less interest over time. But if there are competing capital demands, we know the rest of the story. But it, it doesn't have to be one decision. It could, we could do bonding in twenty-nine differently than bonding in thirty. But ultimately, it would be, and we can have Ben, Ben Oglesby is the financial advisor from Unibank. And so in future meetings, we can have Ben on Zoom with us and we can also have our bond council on Zoom to get a bit more in the weeds. So the good news is no decision now because we wouldn't start using that financed money now.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? I'll close that, Kevin.
All right, thank you very much.
With that, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn the school building committee meeting. So situate second by. I'll sign. I'll call the roll. What are you with, yes? Tom Hickey?
Yes.
Sandy Walden?
Yes.
George Coney?
Yes.
Jim Coughlin?
Yes.
Bob Mahoney? Debbie Do?
Yes.
Jack Manning?
Yeah.
Joe Zandalo?
Yes.
Tom Petrozelli?
Yes.
Dustin Redden?
Yes.
Lance Albucci?
Yes.
And Frank Moore?
Yes.
Motion is adjourned. Thank you.